I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. All members are present, we have established quorum. If everyone plans on speaking at today's meeting, I do need to administer an oath. You simply need to say "I do" when I'm done. Do you swear to tell the truth to this commission, to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. Disposition of minutes. We have our minutes from our last meeting on September the 5th. Shara did send those out previously, as everyone had an opportunity to review them for clarity I move that we accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have cases, a couple of them on the agenda today. Number 12-09, GPD Group, Monte Carlo Towers, it is Title 43 review. This is wireless communication title. This would be the first one the Planning Commission has seen as a case. We also have case number 12-10, which is a Far East Side rezoning request today. Those are the only two cases on the agenda, as far as I'm aware. So, we do have the representatives from Monte Carlo Towers here. So let's go ahead and proceed with that case if we could. Mr. Paske, if you could give us a brief summary?
I can. I laid on you in front of you there, their application and the narrative outlining each of the however many number of 16 steps that were required. Everything I can tell, as you said, this is our first one, it looks like they have fully complied with everything we have requested and asked for. It seems to be a pretty complete package. I have a much larger package here than what you have in front of you.
Okay.
I didn't want to run copies of everything. I mean, it was, it's very detailed, so. But I gave you the basic narrative that they addressed to myself and to the commission members.
Okay. And I see you put that on the application itself. John, the 16 requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they included a letter with those 16 issues attached. Some of the stuff, if you read it, you know, might say refer to drawings, which you do not have, but I do have here.
Right. Okay. And I believe the issue of whether co-locating on a public or a private tower was discussed at the last meeting, and it was based on where the need was met and the fact that there was a tower there already, whether it be public or private, so co-location was possible.
Title 2.
So I guess let's just maybe focus on where their responses are to the items here. Is that the final letter, the September 13th one?
The...
Looks like.
From AT&amp;T, you mean?
Yeah, from AT&amp;T.
The letter addressed to me would probably be the one that would answer the 16 questions. They submitted a letter to the Planning Commission members as well that you have.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
But the one that's addressed to myself would be the one that answers the majority of the questions.
The other one that says September 14th, 2011?
Correct. I probably should say 2012.
Yeah. Just wondering.
It does on the rest of the page.
Okay.
And the issue of the fence was resolved at the last meeting as well with the heightening... The fence that we had seen in the images was just close in. The further away fence would still obscure the lower outbuildings.
Correct.
I didn't have any other issues.
Plus the subsurface report says provided, so I guess they found that okay.
Yeah, there is a subsurface report, and I have it all right here.
And that was adequate, and that was good to go. Tower hasn't fallen down yet, I guess, right?
To myself, where I'm looking at, yes.
Okay.
It wasn't the tower, it was the compound and the expansion of it, and given the limited amount of room.
Right.
But as long as they know, they've heard, they know there has been a problem.
Right.
In some areas, maybe not this one.
RJ? Paul?
Looks good to me.
All right, there's no more comments I would like to put forward a motion to accept the application as is, I guess.
I'd just like to say that I think this, thank you, that this is a great model for us to work off of in the future. I mean, this made it very nice for us to look at things to do, because it was kind of, it's new to us too, so, thank you.
Do you need a second?
I do need a second. All right, Nancy, a second. All right, any other discussion?
Comments?
All those in favor accepting the application for Monte Carlo Towers co-locations?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you.
Good to go. Thank you.
Appreciate you working with us through the process as well. All right, there's no other discussion on the tower. We move on to case number 12-10, Far East Side rezoning request. We had brought this up at the last meeting, and Nancy had made the suggestion of just looking at the R1s, or I'm sorry, the rezoning to the R1 areas, and not looking at the B3s or the existing R2s along those lines.
You know, let me again state that we are going through this B-change process potentially, and that's one reason why. We don't want to wait a year or two on this, it seems to me. Because we were talking about redoing the B zones, we were slogging through B2, weren't we last time?
Yeah, the B3 in that area, the original plan looked like was to change some of them towards the Gramm Drive area that were currently zoned B3, downzoning them into R1s or R2s. But I think what the suggestion was to look at was, you know, I guess I'm going to try to summarize this, but it was, I think the motion would be to have all existing single-family residences south of Jacobs, north of East State Street, in this area that we're looking at, be downzoned to what is existing on the site. So if it's a single-family residence, it would be downzoned to R1 rather than R2. Was that, Nancy, what you had in mind? Or is it more just looking?
I think I have the map in front of me that precedes my presence on Planning Commission of color.
Okay.
And I think that's the skin color or beige color version. Oh, nobody, I got a color one.
I got a...
No, I've got a color one, but it's the older, not version. I think I know what you're talking about, though. Basically duplexes stay duplexes?
Right.
Okay.
It's your printer that has different colors.
I have a color printer, mine.
It's a different map.
Oh, it's a different map?
Yes. This is the first set of maps. This is the overlap right here, which you have.
Right.
And this one's a non-conforming.
I have them over here, too.
What about the big ones right here? Shall we look at that?
Oh, we can do that.
Stretch that out and take a look.
Yeah.
That's just the basement, the road is on the east. Keep going. It looks like. What's the matter? I was just looking at the north arrow and the other stuff and saying, who did that?
Okay, so I have to assume everything that says D is a duplex right now? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, this, I believe, John, maybe you come up here, too, if you weren't mine, since you are resident expert. Oh, here it goes. Thanks.
Do you like this one?
Do the same thing, yeah, that is right. I just want you to confirm that's correct. So the brown is currently zoned B3, the yellow is currently zoned R2, the orange, burnt orange is...
It doesn't have any on color.
Oh, great.
That's a great thing to do.
Is currently zoned R1, and then we have our manufacturing zone, where exercise is manufactured.
Right, and then these are the ones that we put duplexes right up in the Ds.
But you wouldn't spot that currently?
Well, I don't know, but in previous times when there was a non-conforming use, they just put it into the file, and so you could call up and see which ones were non-conforming. Like on the east side, and then even on the west side, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I hope, maybe the file didn't carry over to the Director of Planning.
No, no. Well, it falls over if there's, you know, it's a rental. Most duplexes are rentals.
Yeah.
When it becomes non-conforming, it develops a file. Okay, so what we're looking at, of course, is we've got some parking areas that are actually R2 right now that, you know, I'm looking at the Gribble, Gribble Insurance, here, 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 Hutchinson. We're looking at duplexes over here that are actually R2 right now. Do you want to retain those? You actually have some duplexes here that technically looks like in the B3 zone.
And how do you get your buffer zone between?
It's largely on the ocean, isn't it?
Uh-huh.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I guess a good, it does, you got those two, which section is, yeah, I mean, there's a duplex, two duplexes here, does that work as a buffer to you in your mind, like going down that street? To me, it doesn't seem like it has any effect. It just looks like a bunch of single-family residences.
Big birds.
Yeah.
Big ugly birds.
That T here, what does that mean? Is that triplex right there?
Yes. Yeah, there's a triplex, somehow snuck in on my radar.
Amazing.
And the Gribble property, although, you know, I think that there's been some discussion about that, it could come in as a separate one, and we'd entertain that, wouldn't we? But not do it now? Or do you want to...
You mean draw the line up here?
There's their proposal, looks like two of them already, that it's this lot here, actually, it's these three lots, this one, this one, and this one.
Actually, there's actually, so, there's no one up here, too?
Yeah, but that's not, there's a residence on that.
Where's the White, where's the White House?
Right here, the fence would be...
The fence is important, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, I mean, I would make the suggestion that, you know, it seems like the inclination is, you know, to do away with R2 in most of the area, and that if you were to make it R1, only affect existing houses. So every lot that has an existing house is now zoned R1, even these duplexes, they're now non-conforming, they go into the file. But if any place there's a vacant lot, we don't make any change there.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that either.
Well, at this, I'm saying from, if we're just breaking it down...
People that have two lots, if you ever go up there, you'll see, some people have, you know, like they have a garden and...
Oh, yeah.
Because they're small, you don't really mean what you said, I don't think.
Yeah, I was thinking these, what I'm saying, these...
I was thinking, oh my gosh, lot zoning.
Okay, this is actually a counterproposal that existed later down the line. You're talking about retaining some of the R2s in this zone right here.
That was the, yeah, that was the, this was the proposal that was from the Far East Side organization.
Those two would stay in, the two over here would stay in?
Those are parking.
Yeah.
And then we just have a bunch of non-conforming dots.
The blue are non-conforming, I see?
Yeah.
See, these are vague, so I think that's why they were proposed to leave those as R2s, to let the owner develop some with R2s, I don't know. I didn't make that up.
What was that?
These lots right here are vacant, these two.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are vacant on the big map.
And that shows also on that map, blue map, they stay...
They stay R2s.
But wasn't there some discussion that an acceptable B could go in there, further into the neighborhood?
If, since it's under common ownership, that would be, you know, another way to look at it.
There's a lot of better houses on that street, aren't there?
Grand Park?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I assume we're just dealing with the R2 zone right now, and we're gonna, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what, yeah, I thought Nancy wanted to kind of, and I think that's a sizable chunk to look at. But the problem, I mean, you probably get into, if you just look at R2, are you looking then at B3s, or are you looking at R2s and saying, that's not going to be an R2 anymore? Are we looking at it from a holistic...
Well, I hear the other thing that's being proposed to be upgraded was D3, correct?
Being upgraded to...
R2 to the B3, everything else then going to R1.
Do you have a proposal?
Have you ever written one?
No.
It's all over the place.
Okay, you either do or you don't.
Is it in writing and signed with the money attached to it?
No.
No.
So essentially what you're saying is there is...
I don't know how the person speaks to us while I'm getting that call. I don't know where they're at. They called, they contacted us, not that type of thing, really weren't going forward yet, so I don't know. That is my answer.
Maybe.
It may be, yeah.
Maybe.
I know that sounds wishy-washy, but...
Yeah, well, I guess once you actually get it, I mean, we can...
It'll come to us.
Exactly.
I proposed it, I told them to do so.
And if it doesn't come, it doesn't come, and I don't think we need to worry about...
Will it be Title 41?
It will be a Title 41, but the zone would have to be the first.
I guess if we make a motion to do this, we would say that we recognize that those lots may change, we could put them in number, or the Title 41.
All right, well, one of the things I'm hearing is that it'd be nice if common ownership is under one zone.
Okay, but that, you know, again, when you're talking about common ownership...
Well, you got all these good incorporated owning this whole section here. Some of it's in R2, some of it's in B3.
Yeah.
Which, again, I contend that this could look like this, then.
Yeah, it could go all the way back.
Right. And that would make sense.
Well, it actually...
It might make sense to you, but I feel like some of the citizens have identified that as one of their concerns, but I guess we'll hear.
Right.
Once again, I need to state that I have, my family member has an interest in a singular property in this area, so...
On which street? Not Grand Park, right?
Townsend.
No, it's not Grand Park, Townsend.
Right. Okay. I mean, I think it's, there is a desire to keep a R2 zone in the neighborhood from the planning commissioners, not just the non-conforming, if we were to say everything's R1, that's currently zoned R2, and then you have some non-conforming duplexes in there.
I don't know, we've talked about this. You can see, you know, R2s are pretty much just about zoned out within the city, and I recognize this as one of the little spots left, but...
Well, doesn't that make buffer zones fairly pointless in the comprehensive plan, then? Because, you know, there was supposed to be a buffer between south of Stimson and north of Stimson, a little bit in there. This was supposed to be a buffer, and you're really talking about eradicating that, so I think at that point, you know, if the Comprehensive Plan Commission Committee is looking in, you know, it really, I would think, makes them think twice about what the value of the buffer zone is anymore.
The buffer zone north of Richland Avenue, or north of Stimson disappeared 20 years ago, because the neighbors petitioned, which is why, when neighbors petition, I think we need to listen to them. I think R2 is, I own a duplex, it's a non-conforming structure because it had, I don't know how many people living in it and untold numbers of cars, and I bought it just to protect myself. And I, but I do think that we, in R2 zone, Row Housing in Roxbury or someplace like that, maybe not Roxbury, but someplace that has an usual family, Dick and Jane Scott and Puff, Mom and Dad population, is quite different from the student rental properties that we are looking at here. And I think that if I were living in this neighborhood, I'd want it to go to R1, because people max it out. We have seen that again and again. They'll take a small postage stamp piece of property and put in some huge superstructure that probably shuts the sunlight out of the big superstructure next door, and I think that the whole thing is protect public health and safety, and that's the basis for zoning, protect R1, and, you know, I think this is an ideal situation. I'd like to hear from the citizens, anyway, but I wouldn't be afraid of non-conformity, because we have a lot of them in town.
Well, do we know that, for instance, all the duplexes in this section are student rentals, or are they young professional people that don't want to live in student sections and don't have any other alternative?
I don't know, I've seen...
So basically, we phase those people out of Athens, they, because you really, as I say, if you're eliminating one alternative, reasonable alternative housing style, then I think you're really starting to limit the couples, single people who, again, can't afford a single-family dwelling but don't want to live in what is perceived as, you know, student neighborhoods. So, you know, again, what do those people do if we're, if we continue to eliminate the R2 without providing additional space someplace else in the city for R2s could develop?
Well, your argument would hold more power for me, RJ, if all of this had turned to R2, if there was demand, and it hasn't.
No, I mean, that is one issue that we would want to think about, is the fact that there is, sure is a lot of vacant lots in here that are zoned R2.
It's just, yeah, it's not happening.
Yeah, but if you look further in the neighborhood, there's a lot of vacant lots that are zoned R1 and aren't developed either.
There are a number of rental permits issued in here, so there is rental housing occurring here, RJ. I don't know if we have the numbers, but we could.
Lots of houses didn't sell or lease, too, in the closer, in neighborhoods.
Yeah, I mean, there's, again, maybe people just want a bigger yard, but a lot of the R1s lots are, and I see a whole four here that there's no house on. No one's, there's no impetus to sell the lot and get it developed.
At least not yet.
I don't think we've had a real influx, uptick of duplex building in the past five or 10 years. It doesn't seem to fit what's going on. I mean, we either were building for student housing, or we're building, yeah, at the very best, we're building townhouses, something like, what is it, diversified property tries doing. So that's trying to fit it in the mix there.
But everything travels in cycles, so, you know, if you're trending this out, you know, do you, you know, how do you get it back in someday when, you know, maybe people do have that interest?
We'd probably have to change the lot sizes in this area, because if you were going for a duplex in almost, in very many cases, unless you had two lots, you'd have to get a variance.
Because of lot coverage.
Because of coverage. And so, I mean, it's really just a false zone in a way, and then what it does is it puts pressure on the zoning board to make a finding in favor of something that's really not in keeping with the structure of the rest of the neighborhood.
30 rentals, including...
30 rentals?
Including the duplex, counting them as one. So 39 to 40 units throughout the neighborhood.
And I think that's a trend in many sections of town, certainly on my street, there've been more rental units coming in.
I look, when I first, when we first started viewing this, I looked at how small this neighborhood is in terms of R1, and how it's...
Or R1, R2.
Or both of them. Basically, this whole neighborhood, I look at this neighborhood as one integrated neighborhood.
Yeah, it definitely sticks out like a sore thumb on the zoning map.
I understand the concern for buffer, but the fact is, this, the B3 to an R1, you know, there's going to be a transition. It'll be sharper if we take out the R2s, and therefore, they wouldn't get a bleed-through of more development into this neighborhood. At the same time, conceptually, when I look at R2s, I look at the concept of an aging population that would want, you know, a shared living arrangement, you know, whether it's the mother-in-law thing or whatever it is, you know, or grandmother-type setup. So we may be zoning ourselves out of that need, but the need's not there right now, and we could always, you know, the future planning commission could always rezone this if need be.
What would be the, you know, the impetus for people to want to, for instance, if you made it R1, to make single-family dwellings right up against the B3, which is one of the things that prompted this whole? I mean, at that point, under the current neighborhood's thinking, as I understand it, there, that property would be depreciated, to begin with.
Yeah, RJ brings up, I mean, is there something, can we bring in another zone? Do we bring in like a, you know, what is it, the open space zone? And we have a...
It would be so small.
You know, park like buffer.
I mean, if you're, if you're talking just a lot, I mean, that would, I just don't see the sense in creating a tiny little strip.
No, I think it should be, it should be all or nothing on the thing.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the reason.
Yeah, I mean, that's what that shows, is just a little strip of R2, you know, where it's just a lot.
Okay, what about the businesses that will come forward to us and say, we want to have our now R1 zoned up to B3, which, because we're only taking it piecemeal right now, that's the conversation we're having here, so the next phase two will be the business coming at us and saying, okay, now that you've downzoned at one level, we want to upzone at three, you know?
Are there any examples of that?
I usually, it's called spot zoning, so we don't do...
No, 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 I mean, are there any examples of businesses that are being downzoned, R1, in this proposal?
At the public hearing...
For this proposal, no, because we would just be looking at the current R2s and saying...
This is the easiest bite.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
They would just be looking at the current R2s and just saying, we're zoning them to R1. We're not touching any of the B3s yet.
Yeah.
And then we'd look at it, another, and it's quite possible we may look at and say, yeah, that one lot adjacent a B3, you know, if there's a business there right now, and we just had them rezoned to R1, but that's fine, let's make that, let's bring that to B3 in the conformance, or, you know, what is what we're talking about with Grand Park. But yeah, let's just look at it as the R2.
I don't know if all of you remember, but I do remember, there was quite a bit of hoo-ha about empty truck carriers going up the street. I mean, I think the people here have been fighting a battle quite a long time. I mean, I know Alan Swank calls it a neighborhood business, but I don't necessarily call it a neighborhood business myself. And so, I remember when he said that, I thought of that, oh my goodness, I remember when there were, and there are even signs in some places saying, don't drive your empty truck carrier up this road. There's a lot of traffic, you know, you'll have a guy with, bringing in a car to get fixed over at, I might as well hit Donwood next, and they'll be parked in the middle of the road, and you can't go up and you can't go down.
But isn't that more of a matter of enforcement?
Yeah, but we don't have that many cops on duty anymore.
I mean, because every time I go through these neighborhoods, to be honest, I'd see a lot of traffic going on. I mean, so when we're talking about a safety standpoint, I appreciate that, I mean, I have a family, but same time, I don't really see a lot of traffic going through the neighborhoods.
I think there is traffic, and of course, I did go to the Far East Neighborhood Association meeting, oh, a week or two ago, when they expressed concerns, and that was one of them, that, but you can't prohibit a delivery truck that, you know, if somebody still wants their FedEx or their USPS. Well, we have talked about possibly looking at modifying to make it a little more difficult, why you wouldn't want to turn, keep going up that neighborhood.
Into Jacobs and...
Reconfiguring how you access State Street, so...
But around the valley.
Yeah.
That would take care of everything.
Realize, we have, over time, put more stop signs on Jacob and various perpendicular roads to cut down on that street traffic. I'm aware of that, it was one of the complaints when I first got in office. And I know when, during the public hearing, we had Mr. Shea talking about the fact that he thought we would be changing those R zones, two zones of his or wherever he had his business into B3, so, you know, that, phase two, again, that's, that would be what would come at us again, somewhere along the line, you know, so I'm just trying, you know, again, this goes as a recommendation to council, and they'll look at it.
They'll have to look at it. And there's another thing, too. I know when we had the East State Street widening, one of the things that the engineers told us was, and there just wasn't the stomach in the administration to do it, that we should have closed about every other street. And we refused to do it because there was too much static. Everybody wanted to go out their own street, and these streets are very narrow, and they're, and the distance from street to street is very small. And it was their studied opinion as outsiders that the traffic flow would be much better if they closed every other one, hopefully not the one I live on, or whatever, but you understand what the, what the concept was. You know, Ohio State University has that thing, and other places have, too, where an old 1969 plan doesn't really fit 2012.
Well, I mean, you know, if you're going to run into that when you got a strip road like of that nature, where it's not wanting to be a grid, it wants to be a strip, so it's, you know, it'd be nicer if we had one other thoroughfare in that area, but the problem is we got neighborhood on one side and...
If you did that, though, don't you block off if a delivery truck or something needs to get into the one street that's blocked off now, now they have to go around someplace, probably into the neighborhood?
Up to Jacobs and then back down. I mean, I don't remember the discussion at that point, it was, you know, continuous and long. Maybe one of these guys do, I don't know. But it didn't happen, but the thing was, the traffic flow was a consideration.
Well, you know, when you mentioned the development, you know, or lack of, as far as this business section, this business corridor here, as far as the one business that you might be referring to, yeah, is that trending to where, you know, in about five or six more years, it's not going to be there? At which point, yeah, where you're phasing out more of the delivery aspect, and eventually, this is going to morph more into an office area rather than something that's dealing with inventory sites where, you know, or repair, where vehicles are going in and out of a lot. I don't, I don't know that that's phasing out.
I don't know if it would.
Well, because, you know, because at some point, you're talking, for the most part, with aging structures along this area. So, at some point, business owners want to do something to, they either want to put a new structure in, or revitalize what they've got in some way. So, I guess my consideration would be, okay, how do we allow for that? Or, you know, basically, do you want to do something different, you know, with that whole neighborhood? I think Nancy, or somebody maybe, made the comment earlier, not at this meeting, but a previous one, that, you know, they really didn't see a lot of business activity there as much as there had been in the past. So, you know, you know, do you do something different then with this, with this zoning, with the B3? You know, are you changing that? How is that going to evolve, especially, again, with the news, new ordinances that we have, that might even require a little bit more space for businesses if they wanted to build a new structure, given the tree ordinances, given parking, et cetera? Some businesses may actually need to build out a little bit more to retain appropriate business facilities.
Especially getting in and out of the place.
Right.
It's one of the monsters on East State Street.
And that one especially.
I think we'd see that, though.
But we're not touching the B's.
Yeah, no, not B-zone. Even the, for example, if you look at Donwood, I think it's Donwood, or one of the dealers here in the middle in between Avon and Grand Park.
It's Donwood.
The north two lots that are currently zoned R2 are, in fact, have building, business sitting on it, a parking lot.
Larry's.
Yeah. And even that, I would still say, you know, if the recommendation is, everything that is currently R2 in this zone be downzoned to R1, even those would get downzoned to R1 in this instance. And then, at a later time, we can come back and determine if there needs to be changes to the existing B3, or, you know.
I thought your idea about making the buildings closer to the road and that sort of thing might apply in this one.
Yeah.
But that's down the road.
I think if we do that, we want to make sure that the future planning commissions are aware of it, so, because I could see us doing this, and, you know, the businesses come back and said, you know, we want to change it back to, you know, we want those B zones upzoned, and we're going to come back at them and say, no, that's spot zoning, you can't do that, your opportunity's been lost.
But it would be contiguous, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be contiguous.
But it would usually end up to be one or two proprietarys who are actually, you know, pulling the water for this.
I feel you'll see that application before this even goes to council anyways.
That's good.
Well, I mean, I think...
Then you could probably tie it in.
Well, I thought where we left it was that, let's tackle this one, and then, not even make our recommendation to council yet, and then tackle it, do it in chunk by chunk. Are we saying, let's make a recommendation to council for this one thing?
I'd say, let's go with that.
Okay, that's it.
You know, they've been ringing fire for at least a year now.
Yeah. Well, that, I don't, I mean, it would be spot, I think, I would just urge, I urge our commission to look at it, again, very soon, after, afterwards here, and, and, you know, let's take a few weeks break, and come back and say, yeah, let's look at the very edge ones, where should this have been, should this be a B3 now, and over here at Avon and Grand Park, and, and, no?
I could be wrong. I think we do have some residents here that want to speak, but I don't know that there's any backing for increasing the business zones in this existing area.
I mean, it's fine, as long as everyone, I mean, like Nancy said, we have nonconforming uses, and that's, that's okay. But just, you know, they, what it will mean is that any development that occurs here, if they knock down the structure that's on part of the lot in this lot and want to build something, they will never, they will not be able to build onto that lot again.
Not without the variances and going through a process, or...
Right, right. Yeah, in other words, it wouldn't be a blanket accept.
You hear what you just said, Paula?
There would be no opportunity for any variance?
Not to do a prohibited use on R-zone.
You wouldn't, not be able to...
You can't get a variance out of business on a R-zone. Am I correct?
Correct.
You would not, I don't think you would be able to convincingly make that argument that, you know, unless you were to try to sell that lot, and then, once you sell a lot, it's just, it's not even owned by you anymore, so, it's, that's what would happen on a lot like that. And it's the same now. It's R2. If they were to knock it down and build, they couldn't build business back on that lot.
Correct.
So, it doesn't really change anything from a business standpoint. So, that's, unless there's any comments from planning commissioners, it's, yes, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest when we're going to open it.
That's right.
Before we, before we get into it, exactly where we're, right now, what I'm hearing is that we're talking about converting all the R2s pretty much to R1s. Is that, I mean, as a basis of conversation, that's where we are right now?
That's the motion I would put forward, yes.
Okay. Not that we put that motion forward.
No, it's not, it's not.
As long as everyone's clear what we're talking about, that's all I want to...
The motion's not out there.
Okay, now, you know, when everyone's bringing public...
Okay, if, if we'll halt discussion by the commission members now and open it up to public comments, I do ask, I believe we have, the table and podium are both mic'd today. You can, it's probably more comfortable to just sit down at the table. If you could just state your name.
Oh, we have three minutes.
Yeah, state your name and your street you live on. You don't have to say the address, just so we know you're a resident of this area, that would be helpful. And just your brief comments. We kept to keep it down to about three minutes, okay? All right, let me go first, please.
Where do I sit?
Down here at the table, right next to our city planner.
I believe he has a petition he wants to say.
I just really want to submit these petitions.
Okay, if you turn over to our Shar here, our secretary, and she'll enter in onto the record, I appreciate it.
Those are signatures of people that are in principle.
Two mics, please.
So, everybody on TV.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, those are signatures of people from the neighborhood who are in principle in favor of the change, of the protection of the R2 single-family residences right now.
Okay.
It's not exactly what you're talking about, because I think in the original proposal, and what that says is that R2 would be, the duplexes would be grandfathered in.
Existing ones, yes.
Sorry, could you either sit at the table or stand at the podium? One of those?
They're not picking you up.
Yeah, the mic, the mics not picking you up. And for the record, state your name, so everybody out there on TV knows you.
Haven't talked for six years now, so I'm not used to it.
How we're in for it.
Mary Thomas, I live at 14 Charles Street. And these signatures that I just handed in were collected from the neighborhood, many of them in the Jacobs, East State corridor, but also beyond that. And in principle, the people are supportive of protecting the present single-family homes that are in this R2 section. Originally, I think the proposal was to also grandfather the R, the duplexes in, but, you know, that's, that's up to the commission. But there is a strong support for changing the residential R2 to R1. And I own one of those empty lots, by the way, at 16 Charles, and I would not say it's undeveloped. There's a very nice landscaping on there.
Okay.
Can I clarify on that, that's quite nonconforming?
Yeah, Nancy brought up the nonconformity issue. What would happen is if that, the existing R2s were to be downzoned to R1, the existing uses, or the existing structures on there that are nonconforming would remain nonconforming until the time there is a major renovation. And at that time, I don't believe they can, you can't add a porch or something to a duplex, correct?
If they want to do a renovation, to change the roofline occupancy, use, or footprint of the structure, then they would have to go get a variance to come into compliance.
Okay.
And/or if the rental permits expired for greater than one year, they would lose their grandfathering.
Right.
But as long as they stayed as they are, even change of ownership, they would remain nonconforming.
Right. So, if, say, if you were getting a roofline change, you would, in all likelihood, the BZA would grant a variance on it, but if it were, well, that's, I can't speak yet. Let's put it, there's a, there's maybe a stronger likelihood of a variance being accepted for something like that than what Mr. Logan brought up, that if a business that's going to be, that's currently in an R2, or if it's rezoned in R1, and they make changes, they're, you're just not permitted.
The business couldn't be, because it's nonprohibited use. The resident, it's, it's an allowed use.
Right, exactly.
It just isn't in conformance with other issues, so, that's what the variance would be for.
All right. Thanks for clarifying, John, I appreciate it. Good point, Nancy. All right, any other comments?
Yeah.
Again, just state your name, street, and your comments. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Dill, I live at 31 Graham Drive, and I've sort of been involved in this from the beginning, and was involved in initiating it. And first of all, I wanted to thank everybody on the, on the commission, because I think you're doing substantially what, what we had asked for originally, even though it's been a long process. And if you note, the petition that we turned in suggests that the R2s remain R2 because we thought that was a compromise, you know, from pushback the last time, but, but what you're proposing today is even more favorable, and even more to our liking. So, that, don't, you know, don't take that as, as something in the petitions that we don't want, okay? And I would also like to just point out that the, you know, in reading the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan specifically says that the whole neighborhood should be low-density owner-occupied, and that business incursion into the neighborhood should be prevented. And so, just keep, you know, keep your own comprehensive plan in mind as we move forward. But thank you again, okay?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Melina Miller, I live at 25 Graham Drive, and I walked the neighborhood pretty extensively last night, up and down Graham and on Avon, and I was having some difficulty getting the petition signed, because there were a couple of discrepancies in the, and it was a little unclear in a, in a little bit of the language in our petition, so. But basically, what I got from people is pretty much in line with what you're suggesting. People, you know, there are a lot of people who really, basically, like myself, are unhappy that we have any businesses there, frankly, but, you know, I would have loved for it all to be where the old airport was, but so be it, we live with what we've got. But most of the people with whom I spoke yesterday, you know, feel that there is, you know, that there should be, or that there exists now somewhat of a transition between, from B3 into R2 into R1. They don't want any more, you know, any more of this growth coming our way up those streets towards Jacobs. And so, this map is a very confusing map, in a sense, because some of it, you know, R2 to R2, there, I mean, there are certain dwellings on here that I'm not really sure about, particularly on Graham Drive, this little tiny place that's sort of been grandfathered in, which is next to Mr. Sexton's, and sits, it's a duplex that sits between Mr. Sexton's on Graham Drive and Integrated Services. So, that, I believe, is currently in a B3 zone. And that would be, you know, I don't know how you grandfather that in. We would prefer not to have it grandfathered into the B3.
Sexton's right there.
Because that would enable that...
What is it? I'm sorry.
It's a little different.
Twenty-five. No, I'm saying, that's not twenty-five, it's...
It's next door to, what's your address?
It's S D.
So, it must be...
South of Seventeen Graham.
It's south of Seventeen Graham, so it must be fifteen, or something like that.
Yeah, this one here is through. Yeah, and that would remain a nonconforming use. It's currently in the R2.
Oh, it is R2, okay. All right, so, fine, that...
It would become a noncon, right now, it's not nonconforming, it would become one with this change.
Just to give you an idea, you know, when you live there, I mean, obviously, I can no longer, and haven't been able to, turn left onto Graham for a long time, but those of us who live there, we've gotten used to turning left onto Strathmore, so, that's kind of a working system for us. But, you know, up and down those streets, we have two auto parts places there, there's, and, you know, Donato's, and a lot of these places, I mean, if you're just traveling up and down East State Street, and you don't live in the neighborhood, it seems quiet, relatively quiet, until you live in the neighborhood. Those delivery trucks do not, you know, they don't have the ability to turn left from some of those streets when they're exiting, and they don't have much room in a parking area to turn around. So, we've had a lot of, a fair amount of truck traffic that comes up onto Jacobs and comes back around. Big trucks sometimes, a lot of semis that can hardly make the turns. So, I don't want to underestimate the amount of traffic, just because maybe you're going by and you don't see it. But I do want to say, I want to appreciate Paula coming to our meeting, I'm a member of the, of the Far East Side, and the fact that, you know, those lights I'm noticing really have been, they're, they're turning, they're, they're staying green a little bit longer with some frequency. But, so, I'm really in favor of as much R1 and low density in this area as possible. And that was the feeling I got from most of my neighbors with whom I spoke yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay. Any comments from the commission members?
Before proceeding.
RJ, Nancy, Paul. I'd like to put forward a motion to recommend to city council that the R2 in the Far East Side neighborhood be downzoned to R1 in entirety.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Paula, were you abstaining?
I wasn't. I mean, I would contend that it's, it's...
Well, you keep bringing it out.
I just, I just, you know, have it out there in the open, but I would contend that a major, this, this section affects more than one singular individual property, that my name's not on that list.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure that if you had...
You're in the votes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm in, aye.
All right. Then we move out of the case, onto communications. The next communication is concerning ordinance, or mending Title 21 PUD language.
This is the one that fell through the pax.
That's what shows up on there.
Yeah, it's, you'll find an ordinance in your packet here, I believe, that was a recommendation from council a while back.
Oh, here, like Chris Paul?
Yeah, basically, yeah, actually, I think it was brought up by Nancy when she was on council, the idea of permitting only single-family residents permitted in R1 zone as a PUD, in other words, restricting the, the scope of PUDs. In other words, if you have a res, if you have a PUD right now, and you put it in, you can put it in any residential zone, which you could have a, the example here, I believe, that started this was the Klein on Hickory Street, which is an R1 zone, but is a multi-family apartment complex, and it has PUD. We allowed that. This would actually further bring it down, kind of wedge it down, so, we'd be limited by what we could do in a, in a zone like this.
It was pretty unique, the Klein property.
Yes, it is.
And almost all the space up the hill is buffer zone, so, it's not, I mean, I voted for it, but I just think that the R1 possibility is a problem. The one that comes to mind is the one by the Stroud Run Reservoir.
Okay, yeah.
The big R1 lot up there, possible. Maybe a problem.
Could we limit, if, for example, that Klein ended up using, I think, three lots?
I think so, too.
And he has three, I don't know, those were duplexes, though, right?
Correct.
You know, I mean, could you limit it in a way to, you know, you could have a PUD, but it has to be, you know, if it's a three lot, so that's, you know, it's three single family, I don't know, you know, I mean, not to preclude PUD, but I don't know if you could then be that specific.
I mean, I feel this is a step, and we've had pressure since, you know, we came here, to protect the single-family homeowner neighborhood residential areas. And right now, as happened on Hickory Street, could happen almost on a number of other streets. This would at least be a step in that direction to afford that additional protection.
There used to be a size limitation in acreage.
Maybe that. There is still.
What is it, two acres?
I can't, actually, most of the PUDs we've been doing have been getting variances for the two-acre size.
If yours are less, then, yes.
Do they get them regularly?
Yes.
Regularly.
Yeah.
Whether it's Madison Heights, whether it's the Klein, whether it's Herald Square, I think they've all been under two acres. I tell you truth, when I, this first got, this was moved, when PUDs were moved out of zoning and into subdivision.
Oh, don't start.
Well, yeah, I know, I've been around too long. I was concerned about this one, mostly because the strategic plan of '94, I think, talked about putting a bunch of duplexes in my neighborhood and PUDs in my neighborhood at the time. And the fact that you could take a plan in your development and drop it anywhere in any zone. So I understand the caveat and danger of that. You talk about the buffer zone on Hickory and Canterbury, it's only the hillside that provides that buffer zone. The engineers can get around that. You know, I both know that. On the other side of it, though, I look and say, this limits what can be done in a PUD, in an R1 PUD, a lot. I mean, what, I guess the question arises, what do we want to see if we do this? Are we talking about something like, and Madison Heights being a B1 is apples and oranges, but would we be saying, okay, we can only limit ourselves to single-family housing structures in a PUD, R1 PUD, and what would they look like? They'd be closer to each other? Where, that's what we're managing at that point? Where they'd be structured a certain way? The setback rules would not apply? When would, when would this work the best, I guess is the question I have?
Work the best? You mean the limit, the limit on R1? I guess the question was, how much more can we develop? And it was the question of the hillsides and all the rest. I mean, we have a fine example on Richland Avenue of maxing it out with the summit. I mean, we know how that works.
Yeah.
And so, and it's, it's a big one. But, you know, pods are supposed to be a creative use of the space, and you're supposed to generally save some open space. And what we have then is people coming in and maxing out every square foot of land. And that's, I guess, what I was trying to avoid when we started it. I mean, I was not opposed to Klein's work, think he did it right, but I don't want.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, maybe there's a higher, you know, we flip the 60-40 split in a PUD, and all PUDs have, can only develop 40% of the land, and 60% has to be open.
In theory, the PUD can go with variances, so we could play around with those. Let's look at the Mulligan slots that we saw last month, you know? Somebody could come along and say, I want to turn that into a PUD. And, you know, it's about the same acreage as Madison Heights. So is that, you know, again, is that appropriate place for a PUD, a multi-family PUD? So I see where it applies, what you're talking about here. And again, I, again, I'm trying to figure out when it does work. When do we actually say, okay, we're going to allow a PUD, R1 zone?
As long as they have two acres. I mean, as long.
Well, that's a variance that's been given away. I mean, you know, Colson is another example, too, I think off of West Union.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, yeah, that's one that makes you angry, right?
Well, no, I'm just aware of it. I'm not angry.
Anger is gone.
I mean, to me, like, PUDs is sort of a, I don't want to say anything goes, but you can do different things with the setbacks. You know, maybe we say, that's, that's what you're permitted to do, is you're allowed to adjust the setbacks, you're allowed to adjust the, maybe the built-up area on the lot. One thing you're not allowed to adjust is the use. And if you're in R1, you can't have a duplex. These can't be multi-unit spaces in it. It's.
No commercial, no manufacturing.
Go ahead.
Just as an example, Madison Heights, since that's been on our agenda for a while now.
For four or five years.
If the Madison Heights lot was zoned R1, would the conceptual project that has gone through our process, would that be allowed under this reading? It's, it's. Separate units of single family.
Right.
But it's on one parcel, technically in an R1 zone. Would that be permitted?
See, that's what I'm suggesting, is we look at it that way.
It certainly is unique.
Right. I would think it is, but I'm just, I guess, from, from the code office, you know, there's a question of that interpretation, and to make sure that if you've got a parcel of that size, like, would we be saying that's prohibited because of multi, multi-unit in an R1 zone?
But it wouldn't be, as long as they're separate buildings.
As long as they're separate, single-family units.
And that, that's where I'm thinking, where the creativity, let's call it a PUD, could be. But we can't, but then, this reading would not allow the Klein developments.
Right.
Because those were duplexes in a single unit. Those, if those were three single-family houses.
So in that situation, Mr. Klein would have needed to request a rezoning?
Right.
Okay, all right.
That's just one concept, I guess. It's not what it says. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, I, I agree. The PUDs are for flexibility, and that, you know, this, this kind of limits that flexibility. And I, conceptually, I have no problem with this. Again, my concern when I was first on West Side Community Association was, you know, this, that we could end up with apartment complexes in R1 zone, after having downzoned it from R2 to R1.
Right.
You're just taking the previous vote, and you're flipping it around now. So, I mean, if you're really serious about safety and health, then you would probably accept this wording as it is.
I'm not, I'm not saying, actually, when you get down to it, this being in Title 21. Well, wait a minute. If, actually, I'm not against this. I, the shift that has occurred is now I'm mayor, okay? As a neighborhood association, we're trying to protect my neighborhood after having downzoned it from R2 to R1. And that this gave carte blanche to drop a apartment complex right next to me. I was concerned. Conceptually, though, what I'm looking at here is, first of all, one, this is Title 21. Council can run this through without any, say, one way or the other. We can vote up or down right now, and it has nothing to do with our jurisdiction. Two, I think, as a PUD, we are talking about flexibility. I think one that I'm seeing a lack of in many cases is a concept of where we want, what we want to see in PUDs. And I say that because we, you know, we're supposed to mix and match these things. But when you start mixing and matching, look, example was Madison Heights. Is Madison Heights really an adequate place to put seven houses, right next to East State Street, right abutting? And not to jump on them, but the fact is, that's an easement for their private roads.
And the answer would be no, because, again, going by the standards that we just voted on, you would be saying that you're creating a lot more traffic flow, a lot more congestion.
Yeah.
So you're talking safety and health issues there.
Okay, but that's it. And our PUD, you know, we, this, this is the dialogue we should be having when we talk about this stuff. We've got, it's one, you know, one B zone does not fit all B zones. One B3 zone does not fit all B zones. You know, again, if this was Mulligan, and we were, we were looking at three lots on Mulligan, not, you know, not seven houses, you know, we would say, that doesn't work on Mulligan. It's a high road, it's a, it's got a drop-off. It's really not made for a lot of traffic either. So I guess I'm going to get blurred on this, but the fact is, I think we need to have a more cohesive idea of what we want to see in a PUD, and by location, by place. I have no problem putting this in place. It'll make, it'll just make another hoop that has to be jumped.
But again, a representative of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, a couple of years ago, thought that the Madison Heights was a great project. They thought it fit nicely into the neighborhood. And now we're saying that, well, we don't necessarily think that it does.
I, I think there's, there's been a shift in terms of.
They were attached walls, right? They were shared.
Yeah, that was, that was a condo complex versus, and one of the issues, of course, is road maintenance or the easement maintenance, now that you have separate ownership there. That has changed. Realize that 15 years ago, they were trying to get rid of those B1s because they were considered obsolete. Including Bill's Bakery, West Side Tavern, and Athens Flower Shop. So things will cycle around, as you say.
That was another case where council didn't do what planning commission recommended.
Who was on council at that time?
Jim Sands, IU.
I don't think I was on at the time. Was I?
Well, I mean, B1s are now coming back. It's like alleys. They were going to get rid of all the alleys in town. That was, now they're back.
And, and again, we're talking.
Now, she will probably be back someday. It's just.
Well, and the Madison project also, height was, was complimented.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm not, I'm not an advocate of height, myself, in that regard. So, you know, but again, that, when you have, again, with the, like, the comprehensive plan, and one that was cited out there earlier, I mean, that, you know, that priorities probably can change every two or three years, and you're making a plan every five years, or, you know, something like that. So you're actually shooting over probably where the trends are going, things of that nature. So.
I think the argument is that our comprehensive plan is overdue for revamping.
We just can't afford it.
But it also needs to move more quickly. Yeah, I don't think a five-year plan necessarily anymore is, is realistic, the way things do change, the way, you know, trends do happen. That, you know, you're looking maybe more at accelerating something, you know, the assignment of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, you know, and you're trying to, trying to squeeze it or condense it more into a three-year plan, to get it done more quickly.
Well, and then there's Madison Heights, which might take a few comprehensive plans to get done, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you mean by three-year plan.
Basically, what I'm saying is that, you know, now we're starting to challenge something in, say, for instance, the Madison Heights project now, that just a few years ago, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, or at least one of the members, thought was a terrific idea, that it was a great fit for that particular part of the neighborhood, you know. And so, again, relooking at what a buffer zone needs to do. You know, I don't think it's realistic, you know, that they took a realistic approach. If we're just talking about three or four streets being a buffer zone, you know, can a buffer, is a buffer zone even realistic in a, in a town this size, with all, with all the priorities they have? So.
Well, zoning isn't necessarily the best buffer. That'll separate uses, but if you're looking at, it depends on your use, I would say. It depends on the way the zone looks and the way the project is developed, as to whether it's an adequate buffer or not. We've been pretty, relatively silent on that. I would also argue that we don't implement. We can, we can plan and plan and plan and keep writing books of plans and recommendations, but if we're not going to implement our recommendations, why have a new plan? I would say 95% of the things in our current plan, if we were to rewrite a new plan with new graphics and new pictures and a new font, they would still be the same recommendations for implementation, almost to the T. And so, my personal preference, if we're coming to planning, would be, let's focus on what we should be implementing. Before, we started saying, let's have a new plan. If we're looking at a zoning plan, that's a, that's a different than a comprehensive plan. That includes things that aren't related specifically to zoning. But if we're going to look at zoning, we need to say, are the 10 zoning designations we have right now sufficient? Should there be a separation or another type of a buffer? Should there be something between an R1 and an R3?
Well, I'm getting the, again, the trend, I guess the trend is actually to decrease or eliminate, you know, the number of zones that we have. I mean, basically, if you've zoned out R2 now, R2 is represented by how much in this community. I mean, basically, it's, realistically, it's pretty much down to zero. So R2 is out. So you're, you're talking about actually condensing the number of zones.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, I mean, in R3, you can have all single-family duplexes.
Right. That is correct. You can have a duplex in an R3. Absolutely.
The, one, I guess, I'd still like to, you know, look at this as make, not go this direction, saying only single-family residences are permitted in R1 zone. But I'd rather be more wholesale and just say, use is permitted in the, or the PUD is by the zone.
So you're talking about non-commercial as in business zones, and R, again, you're back to where you started. R1, 2, and 3 can be in any R zone.
Right.
Any PUD.
So use is permit, it should, in a PUD, it's, you know, again, your PUD allows you to change setbacks, it allows you to change those sort of things, but not the use. If you're in R1, it only has to be permitted uses in R1. If you're in a R3, it only has to be permitted uses in R3.
Well, do you streamline things, though, for the zoning board, by doing it that way, as opposed to, you know, accepting something like this?
Yeah, because this is still all very big. This is saying anything goes about this.
I think PUDs have to go in front of us, and then city councils for the variances, not zoning board appeals. I may be wrong in that.
The question I'm having on this, if you had a large parcel, if someone wanted to build 30 single-family homes on, and ran them all out, would that be permissible?
In R1, yeah.
And is that the way we want it to go, or is?
Yeah.
I guess that's.
Would they use subdivision regs, or would they use them?
Well, it'd be a PUD if it's under one parcel. See, the Madison Heights is now, even though we're looking at PUD, they're fee-some plots. But if someone wanted to not make them fee-some plots and make it all one parcel, and put all these on one, you could potentially have an apartment complex, even though each unit's separate.
Wouldn't it fall into, somewhere along the line, it'd fall into subdivision regs in general, because we'd want a public road through 30 houses, I imagine.
Possibly. I, you know, I'm just.
I know, I, yeah, we're speculating on this. Since we pay you good money, Mr. Planner, what do you think of this particular ordinance here?
I don't have any, my concern without, my concern, I would, I would be concerned about developments that are using the PUD process as an end around our zoning.
That's.
Period. So if somebody is saying, which is what Nancy's saying, I agree with that, that, that certainly has a concern. The examples we've used, the Hickory project, because of the hillside, et cetera, I don't have any problems about that specifically. The PUD process, as it's written, does already require a lot of eyeballs on it. And so if somebody tried to do the exact same project as Hickory on Morris Avenue, or Elmwood, or Jacobs, or somewhere, there's a lot of eyeballs already on it to say, we object to this at this location because it's an end around our zoning, or it just doesn't fit. So I think maybe there's already enough of those valves in place. If we're concerned that, you know, as elected officials and as planning commission chairs and planning commission memberships change over time, if that could change, then this is an adequate way to ensure that we're, the R1s are residential zones or remaining a residential zone. So, in short, I don't have a big problem with it. And that's why I was curious specifically about like a Madison Heights project. Because if Madison Heights, as it exists today, was zoned as R1, would you still be allowed to do multiple buildings, provided that each separate building is a single-family residence? And my impression from the five of you, is that you're saying, yes, that could still happen?
Yeah, it could still happen, but again, there might be other outside issues that's not, not the use. Yeah, the use is perfect and great for that, but your setbacks are wrong, or the fact that roadway's there, or the distance between the two. In other words, it could be a self, the safety-welfare issue, not the use issue at all, when reviewing. I mean, that's what I'm getting the sense from the commission members. Someone might need to pass it on to those above, before they continue forward. I mean, that, to me, I don't feel comfortable with this, with just changing it in R1. I'd feel much better with just, with saying, a use is determined by zoning, PUD does not. So in other words, use is permitted, and the PUD are determined by the zone the PUD falls. Can only be an accepted use in that zone.
Okay, so is this as a communication, are we going to act on it or not?
Can we have a?
Up or down vote?
Period. No, the next two weeks, can we look at this, and maybe look at that existing, and then, okay.
Yeah. And then, inversely, it may be something that we, you know, look at our zone, and rather than doing, you know, making the recommendation to city council to change it here, you could just prohibit the PUD in that zone, you know? I don't know. That's, any other comments? I guess we can leave it.
Well, in addition to N runs, the other thing I would say is, we desperately need to change our 1969 zoning map. But you see how hard it is to have done this. And so, you know, everybody's got an investment based on the existing map. And so, that's why I think we kind of came to the conclusion that maybe this alternative would go faster. And that was a year ago, and nothing happened.
No, with the PUD.
Yeah, it fell through the cracks in later years. But I think that that is, that is a, I mean, it's very difficult, because people do have investments, and even though it shouldn't.
And we have updated it since 1969.
Some.
2008.
I mean, I think there's great reluctance. Did they change it in 94? Not much at all.
No, as far as I know, they didn't.
I mean, it's just.
That was technically a strategic plan. I didn't really get into that, so we're looking at housing, mobiles.
Yeah. I think mostly with this, it was just the EI.
Yeah, and that was just to hit the ridges in when it was a next, into a category that was reasonable, which means.
More communication?
Is there a more communication? I was going to move away from that item, so, yeah?
Yeah.
The other communication is, I did forward to have Shar forward to all the planning commission members, this US 50 wastewater facilities project, that was presented to the city council by the county commissioners and their consultant on Monday. They will be back Monday at 7:00, under planning and development. You might want to take a look at it. You're welcome to attend, ask any questions. And I'm working with the planner now on whether or not this endeavor would indeed fall under the definition of subdivision B. It says, "Or as easements for the extension and maintenance of public sewer, water, storm drainage, or other public facilities."
That's 2111.
21.1.
21.11B definitions.
No, that'll slow it down.
But there seems to be, there's not a consensus yet on whether or not that little pie, and it would come through the planning commission. But planning, you talk a lot, particularly, RJ, about, you know, what are some projects upcoming and possible things, so I wanted to make sure that you all had copies of this.
You should have gotten a PDF.
It's a project I spoke about a year ago, as a matter of fact.
Well, it's been, according to them, it's been around since '97, so it's going to be kicked around some more, obviously.
All right, any comments, questions? All right, any more communications? If not, we'll move on to reports from our city planner and director of development and code enforcement, John Paul, can you take the one?
I just have two comments, or two issues to bring up, one of which is, I had a meeting this morning, Andy Stone and Jessica Dine did as well, just to continue communications with Ohio University with respect to their dorm project. So we're having some pretty, pretty good and pretty detailed discussions with respect to floodplain issues, general planning and development, as well as infrastructure for sewer and water. So those are going to continue, Ohio University's taking a deep look and is, in very good discussions with us about all of those issues. Other than that, I'll be in Columbus Thursday and Friday of this week for a planning conference of the Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana chapters of the American Planning Association, just continuing education for the AICP, and best practices, and workshops, and all that exciting stuff, so.
Keep us informed.
I will, yeah.
Appreciate it. John?
I'll start with last week. There was no BZA meeting last week, we did not have any cases on the agenda for this month. And then on Friday, Thursday and Friday, I, myself and Tyler Craig and many other folk attended the Waste of Wealth Summit. It learned a lot of interesting points and some things that other communities around, really, the country did, and have done. So that was interesting. Next week, we will be hosting an informational table at the OU Off-Campus Housing Fair on Wednesday, the 26th. And then on Thursday, the 27th, we will have, I think it'll be our first, maybe our second Keep America Beautiful meeting, since we became a partner in that organization. And I believe they're asking me to give a presentation on beautification day and the things we've done within our community, so, that's it.
All right, appreciate it. Any comments, questions? All right, as always, thank you. Opportunities for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda? Any other public comment? Thank you. Announcements and other business, first off, our next meeting is October the 3rd, noon. I will have a, have a conflict beginning in October on Wednesdays. I'll be out of town. I don't know if we can do a date change to, you know, I brought up before about meeting in the evening, I think most of the time there's resistance, and everyone else has a lot of evening meetings already. So if there's another date, we can start meeting now. This is already set up on the schedule, I suggest going ahead and meeting, but...
That too does a good job.
So...
For the first one, but do we have, I mean, would it be every Wednesday from here on in?
For, yeah, foreseeably for this fall and into, into, I got a project that's out of town that's going under construction.
It's okay, I mean, I just wanted to try, I just want to say...
Tuesdays or Thursdays at noon?
Wait a second, I changed my classes, let's see. It's okay, it would work.
When are your classes, Tuesdays, Thursdays?
I had them all together in one small block, and so I had to spread them way out. I have early morning and late afternoon.
So you're good at noon?
I'm good at noon, I didn't want to miss the planning commission meeting.
What about evenings?
Evenings are fine, except Monday and Thursday.
Yeah. Well, I guess, let's say...
I'd rather have that for noon, myself.
So Thursday at noon, let's say, tentatively for now.
After the next time.
The second Thursday, or the third Thursday of October, I guess. Make sure, I guess, email each other and get feedback, let's make sure.
That's the first Thursday, or the first meeting as well?
The third Thursday, the first Wednesday will still meet.
RJ will be in charge.
RJ will be chairing.
That one's still on, because I know a couple, I've already told you, he'll probably be here.
Yeah, we don't want to...